All right, we're going to be Amity Elementary Center. Burzahs County Girls on the Run. We're going to be doing a pledge.
The E S Y, they're inviting.
Tonight is the... Turn. Tonight is the Committee of the Whole meeting for June 12th. Tonight, for pledge allegiance, will be led by the Amity Elementary Center and Burzahs County Elementary Center, Girls on the Run. Ready, girls? All right, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every day and justice drawn.
Good evening, directors and audience. Thank you for coming tonight. I think this is a lot of fun having the Girls on the Run here. Just a little background for you. Girls on the Run is a program that is nationwide. There are 225 programs throughout the country. We are the largest program in Burks County. So that's how fast this program has grown. So Daniel Boone can show a lot of pride that we have the largest team in the Burks County Alliance as far as Girls on the Run goes. It is a pleasure for me to introduce the coaches who are here tonight. Kristen Stricker, Shelley McCowsky, Michelle Maynard, and Ann Jones. Go ahead, ladies.
Okay, we put together a slideshow just to... It can run while we're talking a little bit. And it just pictures from both teams, Amity's and Burzahs. And the whole purpose for Girls on the Run?
Uh... Actually. All right. Come on.
It's on there.
Oh, there it comes. That's the one?
That's the other.
Now, this. Yes?
Yeah, okay. So this year, we had two teams. Last year, we started Girls on the Run at Amity Elementary, and this year, we grew and had a team join us over at Burzahs, which was wonderful. We had 22 girls on our team. You guys had?
Sixteen.
Sixteen girls on their team, which is great. So basically, what the program does is it... The girls work together to discover their strengths and their weaknesses so they can learn from that and then discover how each of them see each other and how other people see themselves, and how they can work together and be healthy socially, physically, and mentally. And they do that through team-building exercises. They work independently to do self-discovery, and then they'll work with a team. And it's just amazing to watch them come in separately, even if they join the team with a girlfriend, how they grow and discover who they are and what they really can do as long as they set these goals for themselves and what they can accomplish. And at the end of the program, the girls earn a 5K, but the whole purpose of it is not running the 5K. It's setting a goal, working together, achieving that goal. And it's amazing to see the pride that the girls have for themselves and for each other. It really is just a wonderful program. They enjoy it. They do fun activities like make little tutus to run. One of the little girls has run tonight. But it really is, it's a great program so they can just discover who they are and what they can accomplish. And it's not what you look like or how you are perceived by other people. It's how you feel about yourself and grow from that. So it's a great program. And one of the girls, the team coaches, want to speak?
Izzy said she was going to talk about what she likes to talk about.
Great. One of the girls want to talk about what they think she enjoys about the program. Come on.
Well, Girls on the Run is really fun too, and it helps have a lot of perspective on different things. And I really like our community project, cleaning up the Burzahs Elementary Center park, because that really helped us work on different ways to get things together and like kind of clean up the way more than it was already cleaned up. And so I really liked it because it had a lot of different ways to get things like situated.
So this Girls on the Run was a 10-week program, and they have alternating programs. So we'll do it again in the fall, but we'll go through a different set of lesson, 10-week lessons. Any questions? Well, we'll start... Although we had 22 girls, unfortunately, the night... The Monday night following the end of school was difficult. But first, Olivia Benz. Chloe Weber. Lacey Dickinson. Elsie Thompson. And Isabel Baker.
Hold on. One more. Come on, one more. Okay, good for folks now. Just kidding. For those family members that are here tonight that brought their students, if you would like to stay with us for a couple hours, you're more than welcome. If you'd like to do something else with your evening, now would be the time to go.
Wait, wait, wait. Megan's leaving, so if I bring my child, I can do it. I'll get the girl.
Mr. Martino, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mrs. Bynes?
Here.
Ms. Curds? Ms. Curds? Mr. Martino here. Mr. Robinson Neil?
Here.
Mr. Pines?
Here.
Mr. Rathbain?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Rodowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Okay, the public participation procedures are on the inside of the agenda. If you haven't already done so, please make sure you sign in in the back of the room. If you would wish to address the board at the appropriate time, please approach the microphone at the podium, sign in there as well, state your name and address for the record, and you'll be four to three minutes to address the board. Under announcements, I don't have any agenda edits unless a board member has any agenda edits. I think Ms. Rodowski has a few things to bring up that will be... Become part of the Committee of the Whole, but I'll wait for her facilities report. There will be an executive session following tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and negotiation issues. Is there any public comment on anything current on the agenda so far? Seeing none, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Okay, Mr. Sid Hardwood, can you please come to the podium? Mr. Hardwood is a teacher at our high school and is going to present tonight an A P Environmental Science STEM trip to Iceland.
Want to give you a little background. I don't know how much information you've been given until I submitted to write up about that, but to give you all the highlights, if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them. The trip right now is proposed for June of next year. It's going to be open to environmental science students and anyone who's thinking about environmental science. The idea behind it is an education science background, kind of like when you have labs supporting the science program, the amount you can learn from hands-on greatly enhances the curriculum. This would take another step beyond that in terms of actually being field work. Hopefully, it inspires some of the cultural sciences further than that. This would be through a company called World Strides. We will be handling all of the liability and health insurance. This is going to be funded by the students. There is also a financial aid offered by World Strides for any family who has adjusted gross income of less than $85,000. They help with all of the fundraising for the students. There is an opportunity if students choose to, it's not mandatory, at the end of the aid for this program, when they come back to actually do an online college course in environmental studies sponsored through the University of California, San Diego. The personnel they have, there's going to be... I'll be in that room, probably my wife also would be a teacher here at the old school. There will be a full-time bus driver there. There'll be a full-time accredited local teacher resident that's also part of this program. They have a seven-day agenda with science curriculum built into it. I'm not sure if you've ever been to Iceland. Iceland has quite a few things in terms of environmental science. It is the only country that's on it that is actually growing because of plate tectonics that they're developing. So you can see a lot of plate tectonics. It's one of the few countries in the world that is self-sufficient in terms of geothermal energy and also a lot of terms of glaciers and some of the environmental effects that come along with that. I haven't started recruiting any students. What I'm looking for approval is that I can talk to students starting next fall and then their parents after them. And it's funded by the students. The only thing I'm looking for from Daniel Boone would be to permission to talk to students, talk to parents, have a use my classroom for a one-time 30-minute meeting and then close to them. Any questions I can offer?
How many students?
I haven't started recruiting. I'm hoping for around 24-ish. That would give a 12-to-1 ratio supervision from Daniel Boone, and it would be a 6-to-1 ratio with the supporting cast from World Strides. Now, that number is not big, though. If the numbers grow, then I would try to recruit another staff.
So you're looking for approval tonight from us to move forward with approaching students?
Yes.
Anybody have any opinion?
So what specifically will you study in there? I'm just wondering, how does it tie in? Does it tie in financially anyway? And why wouldn't say a trip to Woods Hole?
I don't know what Woods Hole is.
Okay.
The...
There are, I guess, more domestic places that you could participate in. I'm just trying to...
Okay, there's... Well, from an environmental science point of view, this is a unique situation from those three things I talked about that are part of the A P Environmental Science curriculum. The other part of it is, I've been to 35 countries, and the experience I've gotten from each one of those and when I come back, how much I appreciate the different cultures and how much I was able to appreciate what I had when I come home, the level of growth that I've experienced just from being visiting all these different countries, days of the main, and trying to help students with... My wife's also been to 25 countries, that the experience that we had to try and nurture them through this, along with the science, but in terms of world travel and world growth they come up with it, I think that's a valuable part of their learning experience.
That will be during their school year or the summer?
Absolutely not. Not at all. It's a summer trip. So it's scheduled... Tentatively scheduled for the second to third week of next June, so after school's out. So that would put the school at all.
Just seniors or?
No, no.
Everyone in high school?
High school. So I'm going to be targeting sophomores and juniors just because those are the ones that would... I would like to get involved in my course, but I'm not restricting it. So once I start, it's with posters and what amount that I have a freshman that comes up and is really interested in it, I would recommend that.
And the fundraising involved?
The fundraising is similar to GoFundMe and is run through World Strides, and all the funding is private outside of Daniel Boone.
Only question I really had was, do we have any type of policy on travel and chaperones? I have been to school, I don't know if it was... But I mean, that's... I guess that's something that can be worked out later. I just don't know if we have policies on that or if we feel that's...
Well, it will take a year. Takes a class or takes... It takes our seats.
And when we... I mean, I guess what we normally have for chaperones?
But that's not a Boone... That is not a Boone School District sanctioned all.
Nor would this...
Trip.
The paperwork that goes with the parents specifically says in the very beginning that this is not a Boone sponsored trip.
Right.
So if it helps at all, we are not the only schools in this area. There are 10 schools in the six mile radius that are doing it. The two most local ones, why I'm missing is that we're doing that in the same year, same trip. And then Holy Valley is doing a trip this summer to post-reading.
Mr. Hardwood, you've been...
Yes.
Wanted to score and prove the trip. It certainly becomes a Boone sponsored trip.
That's why I'm trying to be upfront and talk to you about it. But I know that from the liability and from a health insurance point of view, it's managed outside of that.
But the second is, didn't... Did I hear you say that with other participants, the ratio would be more like 6-to-1?
I guess I did say that. Well, I can't guarantee that, but that's what I anticipate.
How much is that?
Right now, it's... The paperwork I got from World Strides was $2,700.
That's the old...
Everything inclusive, yes. Transportation, hotel, guides, trip tickets, funding for... Or not funding, but whatever is good as we go into this. I'm prepared.
So you say that students have a little funding site, so... So each student will have their own calendar?
Yeah, World Strides actually helps the students set that up. They set it up themselves, and there's no cut from that that goes to World Strides all for the students.
So basically, so everyone wants to donate to that?
Yeah. And what they do, they try and like, instead of going for like $100 from a granding on or birthday, might go with that funding site, right?
Will you be allowing parents?
I wouldn't. No.
So I think it's a private venture venue, venture, but you're just trying to... You're just asking for permission to approach our children.
That's all I'm asking.
Using our facility for one half hour of the... For a meeting. And I won't interfere with your curriculum all through the school year. It's going to be... You're not going to be passing out material and interrupting these kids' studies.
No, I'll pay those.
You're asking for permission and approach our...
Absolutely.
Private sort of...
And advertise your...
Yeah, yeah, the headquarters, yes. I will have... I have a DVD I'm going to show students, but it'll be after school in my room. So once I kind of recruit and set up a time, I'll have students come like at 2:30, 3:00 in my room. I'll talk to them first, try and get them excited. If there's enough participation, then I will make a range of meetings for parents.
It seems like the need opportunity. Mr. Harris, are you opposed to that?
I...
Caution?
Well, there's always... Okay. I like just having the opportunity for our students to visit another country. So once again, if none want to do it, then there's no trip. However, if they want to do it, why not open up the opportunity? And just like the other group, the Boils, I forget the name, they do an out-of-country trip also. So I think it's a great opportunity that a teacher wants to step up and do this, and it's self-funded, and they do it. Why not give them the opportunity to at least attempt it?
Thermal stock?
Thermal stock? Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
Like one of the things is they actually will cook their lunch in a thermal spot. So boiled some eggs, make a little bread.
Thank you for bringing it to a...
Right there.
You're welcome.
Don't do an extra. Right there.
Show of hands, all in favor? You have your permission.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up is a Eagle Scout, Benjamin Smith. Come on down. Could you tell us a little bit about your... How you earned your Eagle Scout?
Basically, a lot of hard work, planning, stuff like that.
Go closer to the microphone, please.
Learning hard work, planning, stuff like that.
Did you have a project or?
Yes.
What was your project?
I was basically refurbishing a pavilion in my old church.
Okay. Any... Could you repeat what it was at your local church?
It was refurbishing a pavilion.
A refurbishing a pavilion?
Which church?
Yeah, old church. It's off the...
What'd you learn?
Planning is hard.
What's hard?
Planning is hard. Planning is hard.
Yeah, welcome.
Is there anything you'd do differently if you had to go again?
Yeah.
No, are you going to write that on the eagle log?
Yeah.
All right, we have a certificate here for you. Thank you. That's the end of my report. Any public comment on the superintendent's report? Seeing none, we'll move to finance. These items will be on the voting meeting next Monday. Also, many of these items are going to be on the consent agenda, so as you look through them, if there's something that you would object to having on the consent agenda, it would be nice to know prior to our meeting on Thursday, so we can make that change before we have to do an edit on Monday. Having said that, is there any questions on any of the items here?
Several questions. Said indeed, why are we improving funds and covering costs of something that we had? This is for the 2016-17 school year, which is early on.
You want to take that? Okay.
For the first settlement agreement, it was a settlement agreement that we've worked on to narrow down. We've worked on it for this whole school year, so that's why we need those funds.
I still don't understand why this worked out before the school year. I mean, we're approving... We're apparently approving money that is already spent.
No, it's not paid. Not spent.
We're reimbursing.
We're reimbursing that for their expenses.
Is that what it is? Ms. McCowsky, we're reimbursing them for money they already spent?
Yeah.
As part of the settlement?
Yes, as part of the settlement.
And I'm just curious about the wording from the beginning of the time. Number seven, Mr. Harris. What does the Meadows Psychiatric Center do with?
That's true. Special. They do the... They provide services, correct?
It would provide services if we had students who were placed there. I mean, that's a... Obviously, if a student is placed there. I'm saying we don't place students there, but if a student is placed there for mental health and for their parents, we would be responsible for the education.
Right. It's the two-year agreement that we have. We keep a two-year agreement with them. The contract ended, we're just renewing the two-year contract. So if something happens, there are probably that does our psychiatric workforce. We don't have anyone there.
You mean if something traumatic would happen at the school, like a student death or something like that, they would be the ones to come in to counsel the students, is that?
No, if a student has a...
It's an inpatient... It's an inpatient psychiatric facility. I'm assuming that if for some reason a child was there for mental health, they're still... We're still responsible as their school for their education during that time. So they provide it.
Correct.
At a cost of $65 a day to us.
A lot of these on this contract... On this agreement agenda are the renewal of various contracts that we use. We may not use them every day or once a month or ever that year, but that's what's on here. You'll see sub, you'll see trash. This is the end of the year where we renew these contracts. So they may not be in the buildings every day, but these are the agreements that we have, like RAC, the dual enrollment, things like that.
I think most of you probably just didn't know what it...
Yeah.
What it was for.
Okay, seven X. Is this the negotiation we're going to be talking about in executive session?
Yes.
So this is not really final, I guess?
No, we just put it on the Committee of the Whole, so we would have it as a place marker, but we're going to get those details, we'll be talking about it this evening, and it can be pulled from the voting meeting next week if needed.
All right, your last one. Are there... Is there a record that we determined? Is that going to be determined?
A recommendation will be coming during facilities for the inclusion.
Okay.
Is there any other...
Okay, I guess I'll take over from Mr. Martino. Actually, back to... I think it was either... I think it was items C or D. I figure one exactly was, but one of those agreements have the district's own address on there. They have the old address of the Burzahs. So I think one of the agreements should have the right address on there. Ah, I got correct. Technicality, I guess. And then I was curious if we could get an update on, I see we're going to renew the contracts with our folks that provide our... To teachers and all of the agents. So I was wondering, have they met the goal of what they had stated that they were going to do? You know, I guess if you remember how many were doing, do you find that service to the value that we're getting quality subs and trying to people fill those?
They provide services for us when we keep our numbers manageable. So if we have 20 teachers out, no one can fill that. But when we keep it 10 or below, they're fine. And recruiting, they are... They have open houses here, they're recruiting, they're recruiting, so subservice quality of people, they're fine. I believe they fell a little bit short, and I can check with Rob on that. They fell a little bit short, I believe, or right on?
They improved our fill rate from the previous year where we were at. They proved that they didn't quite hit their benchmarks where they currently hopefully get to, but if they do that, then hopefully they will.
Right.
The worst, I would characterize, and I'll certainly thank you for that information from... Early in the year, it was rougher when they first started out, then they got better. They started adding, our demand was a little higher than what they anticipated. They were, they did some recruiting things, they went to colleges, they recruited there, so they did some things to add to the pool. They did better. Not that we still want them to keep working on it, but nonetheless, they did, they showed some...
And I assume, I mean, it's a three-year contract, but I assume... Because what they do is they take the rate that we're paying, and then they pay the person less if they take a percentage of the cost of that, right?
Yes.
So I assume if a future board decides that we want to increase what we're paying the subs, that's obviously not a problem because it's a percentage of sub-behavior. So if the sub gets more, and the subs gets more.
Right.
So I would think that'd be a... So I would think that'd be a issue.
They do have a cost of living increase, I believe, of 1% or 2% built into the contract over the next three years.
Okay, so actually, our, our subs, service will be, our costs will be going up then, and pay that the subs would get, or will get, is also a cost?
The cost of living, yes.
It's like a 1%?
1%.
Then bringing in a cost of living.
And that's that way, because we, we are able to do a multi-year contract, so we initially had a one-year contract, it's happened, but they're willing to, just like most companies, work with us when we do multi-year contracts, that's why we switched to a multi-year contract.
And then, so with that service, how is, how is the ASOP system working with that?
When they put it in, when the teacher puts it in, it notifies the company and then...
It notifies the company and ends us? And the policy now is that they have to do that prior to?
No, a teacher has to notify the principal, or an employee has to notify the principal that they're going to be out. It's still put into ASOP. For the principal to know, it's just a matter of allowing him or her to manage the building appropriately, also knowing if that person's gonna be out more than one day, they can make arrangements.
Okay, the reason I ask is I see we're doing ASOP too.
Yes.
I wasn't sure how, and then, because before we use the service, the ASOP system wouldn't let us know how they were out, right, and then we try to fill it.
Right. This way, we have a pool, and like Rob said, they have a larger pool than we do.
So do we still need any ASOP?
Yes, yes.
That was my, kind of my question.
Any other comments or questions on seven?
Another question. Who was in the way with the edge annuity posted solver solution? Is that just the server's software? Edge annuity?
Yeah, that's for Compass Odyssey. We actually reduced that cost from the previous years. We, we are created to use that at the elementary levels, study aisle, and it's got more robust there, so we're enabled, maybe talking about that at CNI a little bit. We still need it as part of our RTI program at the middle level, that's, we use that for, as a core program in our RTI and middle levels, we still need that for that. We also use it for credit recovery at the high school level, and also summer school at the high school level, although some of that is defrayed by the kids' tuition for the summer schools, unfortunately. So we were able to, as we discussed in the CNI community, that's actually, and we're actually drilling down, we're looking at that for the, for the program at the middle level, different options available out there for future years, I'm gonna approach that program, and also credit recovery stuff. Good question.
So Compass Odyssey, this is the new one?
That is, yeah.
And that's about half what we usually pay the workers.
Yeah, it's, it's down.
We carry it down to the point, so we have the whole package.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was, that was...
Absolutely, so we were able to drive that cost down.
Okay, I think that always has changed.
Yep, they're changing.
Also, secure home, I'm just, I'm not familiar with that, SAH, 2280, CC.
That's a, that's a facilities contract. Casey, do you enjoy this off the top of your head?
That is for the alarm. Do you have any fire alarms? There's people that call the fire companies. The alarm goes, files out to their office, so it's 24-hour alarm monitoring required for us. And it's the same company we use, we've used for many, many years.
Okay, and we're happy with that?
Yes.
That'll be a lot of pull. The quality of the subs that we were talking about, the sub contract, we talked about the quantity, are we pretty comfortable with the quality of it too, I guess?
Yes.
And then the dual enrollment, which I'm thrilled about, is RAC. Really appreciate the administration's effort there and the service. Of course, I think there's 17 classes being offered, but isn't the course selection period closed? How are we offering them for next year? Or were they already offered, and just like kind of pending approval?
Well, the dual enrollment, the students... Once again, the dual enrollment, we could both be in the same class, and I would not be getting credits when you could. It's up to the student, they want to take the credits, the college credits for the class.
Okay, so it's just up to them, to them, they've already signed up for the classes, then they were dubbed appropriate or acceptable to RAC, and they pay the $99 of credit individually, they'll also get RAC credit?
Yes, the teachers went through training last year through RAC to make sure that the classes were of the level that met that requirement, so it's up to them.
Yeah, so that's great, I really appreciate the administration, I appreciate the teachers and think that opportunity available for them, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I have one more. Under, under I D U, the, the, we just have the plan document, I looked at the plan documents that I have two good concerns, maybe we should, we should check on. Probably the plan documents we're gonna make available in that plan, both loans and process to take out money on emergency basis. So the TPA should, should track that, typically they are asked about that, I did not see on their, their documents, but I think I recommend that we don't allow those options. That's an area where it could cause problems if the, if the TPA is not properly, not many things, so I, I just assume not allow those options. Just, you know, it would be better, so I think we're gonna still, we'll look at that a little bit.
Lloyd, do you propose?
Well, I just heard they don't allow withdrawal loans or emergency withdrawals to the bank.
Okay, one of the main reasons that we went with the TSA as an overview for that is because of the loan stipulation. Having people put their money in a 403B or IRA or whatever, there are specifications that they are allowed to take loans, and there could be emergency situations. I don't know, according to what I've always seen, I've never seen that a good idea to restrict people from being able to take loans. We should definitely look at it.
It's a retirement plan, where it should be in there for retirement, not, it's clearly the money that you can touch.
Oh, right, and we're dictating...
So a lot of times, plans that we work with don't allow loans, specifically, so that, because sometimes employees tend to use them as a bank, and that's not what we want to spend for.
Absolutely.
So, and typically, this is the area where if there's one issue, the IRS is one that looks for issues, and that, that would be one of their game.
And that's why we, that's the main reason, because that option was available with the 403Bs all these years, all these years has been in that plan document, we wanted to bring the 457 under the same umbrella, because that is a major concern, because if you have two different providers, they could take loans here, default on it, and then go over here, and there's nobody protecting the district. Under the TSA, they're protecting us because they're the ones that go to audit with us for us. And they've been in, they had the statistics, I think that they've been in 30 audits over whatever, the last two, three years, and they've indicated they've had nothing, no rate-ups about it, because they've been able to track it. So if we do or if we don't, that's a course of wordlessness.
My suggestion is not, but that's, that's my suggestion.
You know, I would, I would agree, you would never want to touch your retirement savings unless it's an emergency. We had a situation in that, in that, exactly that in my group where I worked, terminal brain cancer, he had to pull from that 401K just to keep his family solved, you know, just to keep their finances solved. So, I mean, there are reasons that you would want to make that available to somebody on an emergency basis.
I think there's also reasons, I mean, I don't know if you're responsible and you understand, but there's times you need a short-term bridge, and you're borrowing from yourself and paying yourself back the interest instead of just paying it back to a bank, so, I mean, I know people that have used it responsibly that way. I guess there's always an opportunity for people to not, but you're paying yourself the interest.
Yeah, a lot of people don't understand that, you know, they, they lose jobs, and also they never pay the loan back, and also it's tax advantage, and they never realize that. So, I mean, there's issues within that, you're correct, it's someone's responsibility, they own doing.
Right.
But, but you also, just so we get some more information, could you...
Typically, there is a fee involved with the loan, and I can see that anywhere in their application, but typically there is...
It wouldn't be a fee to the district, but it would be a fee, but I'll definitely, I'll inquire about it tomorrow and send the email now.
So we're talking about item number 11 in the document, loans, acts, warranty, and things. I want the board to also be aware that number 10 is unforeseeable emergency withdrawals are also permitted under the plan. So there is a serious discussion there, or if necessary, and what exactly constitutes emergency, unforeseeable emergency withdrawals, as opposed to, you know, go ahead and take a loan. You know what I'm saying, we're offering both.
I know, but that's, that's a personal, the reason a TSA is involved, just, just to give you just a little history here, the TSA became involved because the districts can't act as financial people.
Yeah, good.
So the TSA is set in place as that umbrella, so that's whatever they want to constitute an emergency, they have the specifications on the agreement, and that's between the employee and their financial advisor. Now, that, my assumption is if I'm gonna go get a loan from something, the financial advi, that's between them, that has, we don't specify, we just offer the benefit. That's like a rollover from plan to plan. There's certain things you can tick and tie off, that's all, that's between, yeah, them, and there's laws, and they got all the forms, and we don't...
So what are you recommending, Mr. Rathke, 10 and not 11?
I'm, I'm saying, pullback.
He's just trying to protect the employee from themselves.
Right, but is, but is it our job to, but is it our job to protect the employee from themselves and take away potential benefits from a responsible employee?
It's his job, literally, it's his job, it's what he does for a living, but no, it's not our job.
Right, I, I...
No, no, I tried to... No judgment attached to us, David.
I tried to scare him, but I can't.
No, and I, I understand his point, I'm trying to save people from themselves, but...
You are, he is right, I mean, you really don't want to ever touch that money, unless it's absolutely their last resort, and who's to define what that last resort is?
I think what's there is that is true, right, that, I don't think our role as a school board is to be deciding what the people employed by the sister can or can't do with their retirement fund, I just don't think that's something that we should be interfering with.
Well, we have to decide.
Unless we...
Why must they decide?
Before, before they can get their disbursement, they have to spend an hour with Mr. Rathke for financial advisory.
I'm okay with that.
I'd probably put that down.
I mean, we should optimize and allow foreseeable emergency withdrawals, but deax the loans, loans are not be permitted.
Not to drag this out, but I think it's good advice to advise them not to pull the money, but it's their money.
Right, because they don't even have to put anything into it in the first place, right? I mean, it's not, it's a mandatory contribution.
Exactly, that's a benefit.
So I don't know that we should be telling them they can't take it out as a loan.
And this is something that's already ongoing, so past practice, this has already been allowed.
This is the way it's been done.
Yes.
So if I put my money in there thinking that I can get it back with a loan if I need it.
Right, and it's been allowed all these, all these years.
And Mr. Harris, could you do me a favor and not use that phrase, please?
Past practice? Forgive me. It's also my wedding anniversary today, so...
Congratulations. Take care. Your wife.
Is there any other comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to finance on the budget, number eight. Everyone should have received the revised bud, five-year budget plan from Ms. Haynes today. Sure we'll have a robust discussion on that a week from now, so...
With Lori. Lori?
Mr. Small, I think there's been...
Did you want to talk about the BEF at all?
BEF?
The revised BEF?
Revised BEF? Yes, we got an email from PDE here from Pasbo today that PDE has tweaked our basic education subsidy for both this year, which is an ongoing issue all year. They reduced, reduced this year's by, it's a net of $40,000, they reduced this year's by $13,375, and they reduced the projected that they had out there, 1780, by $27,447. So the revised five-year plan that we'll be sending out in the morning will be about $40,000 less in basic education subsidy.
And I've already updated it, I can send it out.
But they, yes, eight and a half million. But they can change that again tomorrow. That was the latest word today.
So how, how close are they to a budget at the state level?
The legislative report's coming up here shortly, so...
Oh, yay, okay.
What are we putting on? So what specifically then are we gonna note on? And what's the value we're gonna be noting on?
Yes, that's what we're, we're gonna discuss it, see where we can get five votes and then vote on it.
So we're gonna discuss it then?
I tried, I tried to, I tried to drive that point last week, and we didn't get very far with it, so it's, unfortunately, it's, it's gonna come down to next Monday. I would have preferred that we could have those discussions and arguments, and that you would have a really good idea of if you're gonna take something out, put something in, what the true cost of the budget's going to be. So we'll, we'll do that on the fly on Monday.
What do they talk about in the budget table? Which I've already forewarned everyone about. I read the Hot Summer 3 article on our last meeting today, it was a very genteel article, shall I say, it was very politically correct, I guess. I am not a politically correct person. So my assumption, since the only person I heard talk against raising taxes besides me was Mrs. Fites, my assumption is that the intent is to raise taxes. And my comments about that are not favorable to this board, and probably not to other people in the room, but I intend to read this tonight and to get it next time before we vote. And Mr. Curves has often told me that when I read stuff like this, I don't show enough emotion, and that's, there's a reason for that, because I'd rather just keep it to what I feel and not be emotional. In the past year, this board has done a major financial disservice to the Danaboom area school district, taxpaying community at large, and specifically our senior citizens. We did not exercise our fiduciary responsibility to control costs, and thus are now in a position to be considering to get in raising already exorbitant school property taxes. I keep hearing members saying, I don't want to raise taxes, but I have to consider future budgets. I have to ask, what was your forward thinking before now? And negotiating contracts, it's a prime principle to not agree to what you can't afford. In the past year, several labor contracts were up for negotiation, but instead of holding the bond, our agreed-upon offers, this board capitulated. The support staff kept increasing their demands, and we wound up giving them more than we ever intended. But we then presented a factual case to a fact-finder that our teachers are among the highest-paid in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and our school property taxes are among the highest in the county of perks, and we couldn't afford to concede more than. The fact-finder, as fact-finders are wont to do, wrote a report that attempted to split the difference, but we had no obligation to accept this findings and could have continued negotiating. Instead, we did not add the column to the matrix, which would have controlled salaries and pensions as we desired, we didn't do anything to control our healthcare costs, and we did nothing to correct our work rules, in particular to eliminate the many burdens of past practices allowed by past permissive administrations and school boards. So I say this to this board, why all of a sudden are you so worried about future budgets when you apparently didn't consider them when agreeing to the labor contracts? The only way to approve contracts without having the money to pay for them is to have it in your head that it's just too easy to raise revenue via increased school property taxes. One of our board members made the argument... One of our board members made the argument that we can't hold the line on salaries forever, and several other board members agreed, but it was never said to hold the salary line forever, but perhaps just until the rest of the teachers of Pennsylvania caught up. I've asked several times regarding salaries and taxes, how high is too high? But this board apparently thinks that most of bottom is pit. As Dwyer said, financial disservice specifically to our senior citizens, a board member perfectly stated she's tired of hearing about senior citizens living on fixed incomes. While tired of hearing it or not, the reality is, there's a big difference between being of working age health and being elderly with low or no income increase to look forward to. Even a cost of living increase only addresses past cost increases, not covering the future ones, and certainly not school property tax increases. This board member apparently thinks senior citizens after working all their lives should seek part-time jobs in order to pay taxes within control. The worst part of this is not just that a board member said it, but rather than other board members said nothing to challenge the comment. But there's even more. Two of our administrators cost this district more than three hundred thousand dollars in the past year through sheer negligence. And this isn't written, but I'm reading the item eight, A2. Three hundred thousand dollars is the entire realty transfer tax. The entire transfer tax. That shows you the enormity of the three hundred thousand dollars that it cost us. Not only are they still employed here, they were not severely disciplined, and some board members are quick to make excuses for them, perhaps even supporting during them another salary increase. Well, why not? Well, just raise taxes. Hopefully, future boards will do a better job than this one of understanding our obligation to the taxpayers who pay the entire price for everything that occurs in this school district.
Thank you, Ms. Martino. Public comment?
David Poole, 443 Gilbro, Douglasville, Pennsylvania. And so...
Someone took the pen.
Outside, yes. Here you go.
Got it?
Oh, man.
I want the pen there.
I just have one question. Do we have to raise taxes this year in order to meet this year's budget? I'll let you think about that for a second. If we absolutely have to raise taxes to meet this year's budget, that's okay. If we don't have to raise taxes to meet this year, if this year's budget is already required, why would we? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations by board members. Mr. Martino, is there any secretary's correspondence?
No, Mr. Wolf.
Berks County Intermediate Unit report?
I have a recap of what happened. I did not attend. It was my old teacher came, so I apologize. Who's that came? But at the meeting, we did acknowledge receipt of bids for several items, including classroom office supplies, digital media equipment, technology supplies, and trash services, which I believe we did add on to that one bid. We also looking at bids for various lease purchases of several vans, many buses, and school buses. I was nominated for another figure of the year with the IU, so they definitely identified its cars in December, so someone will obviously be filling that spot. We also approved the seventeen eighteen BCIU childcare and Berks County Head Start calendars for next year. We did write a bio written with the Bandar Group to provide grant funds to support the IU's PA Early Learning Investment Commission, providing a strategic plan of...what that commission is doing is they're actually looking into care before pre-K, getting some of these kids that are coming from troubled homes into some nurturing environments. They're tapping into the business community, because statistically shows that it saves a good chunk of money in the long run, so that's the business community actually to be funding these items, not taxpayer dollars. And that's...they're just looking at the important things that I saw in the... Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Rathke. Mr. Martino, legislative report?
A couple things. The Pennsylvania Legislature passed a unified partisan bill, sent to one, the overall retirement benefits in Pennsylvania is too dead-ridden, help with pension plans. This bill was then sent to Governor Wolf's signature to be enacted into law. Unfortunately, because the crisis has now supposedly been managed, our legislators will move on to other issues that we won't hear about, real pension reform for several years. And I say unfortunately, because this bill does absolutely nothing to alleviate the more than sixty billion dollars in pension fund debt, does not address current employees, does not address current legislators, and does not even impact new buyers until 2019. That also totally exempts state police and state corrections officers. In other words, don't expect any pension reform relief for school property taxes anytime soon. To answer the question that's asked earlier, with only eighteen days until the 2017-18 budget deadline is June 30th, and not only is no budget proposal agreed upon between the House and the Senate, but Pennsylvania is facing a potential three billion dollar shortfall for next year. And lastly, Senate Bill Seventy-Six, the Property Tax and Independence Act, which would eliminate school property taxes, was reintroduced again in the Senate and the State Committee. In the meantime, school boards from Chicago will continue to spend money and raise property taxes with little regard to the taxpayers.
Any questions for Mr. Martino? Seeing none, if there are any other reports I'm unaware of. Is there any public comment?
Yeah, one more time. I would think that the board, at this point in the game, would get on a resolution to support the...
SB Seventy?
Seventy-six, yeah. I'm very tired of that.
Mr. Poole, this board has, in fact, it was done by the previous board when Dr. Otto was still here, but the board has written and supported the Property Tax and Independence Act, and both were on record.
Tends to fall on deaf ears, I know, but, you know, it would really be, you know, kind of a boost, a boost of means for it. Go ahead and, you know, get together a resolution to support it. Sooner or later, we're going to run out of money if it's gone. And, you know, I've supported SB Seventy-six, each of SB Seventy-six years. I've kind of just, you know, thrown it on my hands. I don't know what the heck we have to do, whether it's our scheme legislators, get all their trust and actually get something done, because nothing else really is going to work to relieve tax pay, you know, private tax payers, of course, the Commonwealth, until something gets done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to nine personnel. We have a number of personnel moves there. Is there any questions or comments the administration can answer on any of them? Hearing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to programs. Do you want to go over the lockdown training? There's one thing I asked about.
No, that was Rob, but...
Rob, lockdown, the lockdown training?
Yeah, they are consulting with us, really providing professional development for our teachers in August. They've approved the contract, but also they're consulting with our administrators, and also reviewing our safe schools plans, in particular for intruder type situations, making sure we're compliant with state laws and such. It's well worth the money given the safety concerns.
And this will be done in conjunction with the local municipalities that service...that serve our schools?
We, as part of our safe schools, we do reach out and give member and understanding with our local municipalities and municipal departments.
Okay. That's where the same... Same thing goes never at that... That's what Mike Scott, right?
Any other board comment? Seeing none, public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to curriculum instruction. Mr. Kurz isn't here tonight. We don't have a...there's no planned curriculum instruction meeting that I'm aware of, until Mr. Kurz advises otherwise. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, extracurricular committee? Mr. Rathke?
Hey, let's see if I can make a coherent thought process here. So, we've been discussing the sports and extracurricular for a while now, you know, mainly because of concerns about all the fundraising activities in the district, as well as the fees that we charge for sports, as far as...as far as that's been hurting our number of kids that's been participating. So, we've had several meetings on this, and so a couple of conclusions and suggestions from the committee, including from Mr. Schmidt, as well as Ms. Byss, and the Marvellous School folks as well, especially. So, and already added to the budget, correct if I'm wrong, Ms. Haynes? So, we do have the salaries for recommending hiring back athletic coaches, correct?
Yes.
That's already in the budget.
Yes, it is.
So, it can be taken out if board decides that it's something that we don't do, that it's not...those that have been hired yet. But that would be...the athletic coaching positions that were in the district several years ago have been cut, and in particular, quite a few in our school. And that's...the opinion is that's where we kind of have to disconnect with our sports program. The other biggest item that the front range has had to pay for really had the uniforms. And, you know, we haven't paid for a uniform in the district in several years. That is not...that is cut. And I know in the past, a couple of board members told me we're still paying the uniforms, but that is not the case. So, uniforms were also added back in, and Mr. Schmidt has put that one to a four-year cycle with various sports, so that those uniforms should stay. He looked at uniforms that were recently bought, and we need to buy them, and that's how we kind of classify the schedule. And the intention is that once those uniforms are used for four years at the high school, the goal is to then pass those beyond to middle school, and we get a few more years of life out of them at the middle school level. Now, the uniforms were not in the budget, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's an item that would need to be added to the budget. And I see if I have the cost of...do you have that handy, Ms. Haynes?
That was...the only one that I was going back and forth was that band uniform, or the band?
No, the band, I got a banner on the server.
I don't have it. I only have the salaries on the coaches. He didn't send me that dollar mail.
I see. I have the schedule when he was on a three-year...
And I didn't get an email on that.
If I had, I'll keep talking while... The uniform cost. I think I do have it on here, but... So, those were the main items that were brought back into the budget. And I think overall, it was a total of... I'll switch here then. So, the recommendation we came up with, so right now, we charge for a...for a sport is a hundred and fifty bucks for the first sport. And then for your second sport, it goes to seventy-five, right? And then the cap on a family is five hundred bucks. And then if you want to participate in clubs, there's a separate fee for that. So, I had Mr. Small looking at the total fees that we collected last year, and that added up to roughly a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So, what we're suggesting to spread this cost out and make it, I think, an easier go, just go and try and collect these fees. We looked at across the board, number of students per grade, and that would be seventeen twelve. And factor again, free lunch, so those students would not be charged a fee. We came up with a number of, for grades nine through twelve, they would be charged, every student would be charged a hundred dollars across the board. And those students would have access to any sport that they wanted to play in, and any club. They were a participant. If they don't participate, that's fine, the fee would still be assessed. It would also allow all students access to our home games for a dollar per game. Right now, they get charged four dollars. So, we're kind of adding a little perk, if you will, of being allowed admission to all our home games for a dollar. Grade seven and eight, you would charge seventy-five dollars. Reason that's less is because typically, less clubs, and the athletics typically don't play as many games as you would be at school level. Again, that's across the board for a parent student, except for junior students. And then I was trying to confirm with Mrs. Byss, maybe Mrs. Rexford, would we save fifty bucks for sixth grade?
Yes, just for...
Just for those?
Yeah, TSA.
Yeah, so for kids that are participating at TSA, it would be fifty bucks, otherwise sixth grade would not be charged. So, what that...we're hoping that would do is we're still going to collect fees, and that would go towards offsetting the cost of the uniforms. In particular, as well as the cost associated with sports. We're hoping that by taking the burden of the uniforms off of the students, that that would greatly reduce the fundraising involved in schools right now. I think everybody is aware of what's going on with fundraising activities. I know, in particular, I experienced it, I know some people around here on the board want to see that cutback. It's just, it's mind-boggling in that fundraising we do. Our recommendation is to, if this is approved, to give it a year, see what happens with the fundraising, and then reevaluate that and put some controls in place then if this fundraising activity does not soon really diminish. And we're also, at the same time, a couple of years ago, we pushed the, all the team accounts out to the boosters. We're actually now recommending that they come back in-house to the district. It's been a long conversation with the boosters and our business office on that. So, and the conclusion was that these are really our student, student places and they should be, should be in-house at the district. And fundraising for these activities is, when you put it out, it should be an easier process. There's also, there was some concerns raised to us about from some of the clubs, how any kind of restrictions on that would come to play. So, again, the reason why we're gonna kind of let, let the fundraising play out here is to see what occurs with taking the burden of, of this uniforms off the games. So, that they get medicines.
Yeah, in policy, I remember for the fundraising, there were limits already for the number of events that they were permitted to have. So, it seemed like it would go kind of hand in hand. If you're saying we're gonna reduce the number, the amount of money they have to fundraise, then we should also look at that policy and say, well, it shouldn't be three events, it should be one or two, whatever.
We haven't had a point of funding. Are you sure?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not gonna bet my life on it, but I'm pretty. I thought there was a limit on having.
But if there's a number, then that's not being followed.
No, it's not being monitored. Yes, and that was something we were told that would be done. And we, for a while, I think, especially Mr. Spice was very keen on that is to make sure that they go through those fundraising requests that we get every month and make sure we're quantifying that through the school year so their maximum isn't exceeded. So, I think we also would have to revisit that to make sure that the administration's actually following.
Well, I do believe the burden from what I was attending these meetings, the burden on the athletic, sports programs, the burden on uniforms or relations. To have these kids join and have to go out and spend, Mr. Rafka verified that, would he have to raise and spend to supply uniforms? We had some, really, we talked about what the district should fund and that's obviously something they should be responsible for.
I just want to add that the members of the committee were, it was a lot of agreement that it could be limited to two or three, as long as there could be exceptions made for postseason play or extension play that maybe Mr. Schmidt could have authorized. But we thought, you know, we'd wait and see how things settle when we just would change it. We just take the burden, I think there was a lot of excitement about taking the burden of fundraising for uniforms off the plate. And I just wanted to add Mr. Schmidt's comments behind his recommendation for his new activity fees. So, one fee at the beginning of the year, obviously people like to pay online. Income would be around $165,000. We already, right now, we generate 110 from activities. It's some students that like to try more sports and clubs because everybody's paying, sort of like the college model. This would no longer be a pay-to-play model in our community. We're doing, everyone pays, which is generally, I think you got the model from Randy line. And the only thing I don't, I think you were kind of a family maxim, though, I don't know.
Yeah, we, I feel that ended, we revisited. He was talking about the, the Catholic assets that we currently have placed, that you buy for four events. Everyone allowed, we originally talked about a lot of the students that pay, come for free. Decided a dollar a game, just some little, the skin of the game was the words. So, we'll probably look to revisit on the athletic pass or family costs next year. I did pull up analysis with Mr. Schmidt's notes here. He was looking at it out, $20,000 for a uniform creator, what the number was. And I have it listed here, I think that the coaches wise, you would be adding one baseball, one baseball at the high school, middle school, Indian baseball, girls' basketball at middle school, cross-country football, field hockey, soccer, girl's soccer, softball. They also have girl baseball at high school. Those are the athletic coaches who was recommended that we start paying slightly to. We also did discuss a couple of things about the music area. They're, they're just expecting to get a number next, next year sometime for uniforms for Christmas for them for the following year. I know the boosters will certainly help us with that, but their uniforms are.
Forty-five.
How many years?
They're, they're 10 years old.
10, 10 years old. So, so they're researching for next year, so they'll probably come back to us next year with that. And also, we did have a question, I think the solicitor was looking into a little bit with, sort of asking, raised a question about paid positions from the boosters. Yeah, so we're just confirming on that, make sure we're covered in that area.
Can I just add a little bit for that? The committee was pretty excited about the recommendation. I think the impact on the budget is 60 or 70, 60 or 70,000 dollars for two.
Yeah, in adding, I think, I think.
About 60, 70, 65,000 dollars impact on the budget. But it doesn't include the additional fund. I don't think they include in the additional revenue fund, the.
No.
The activity fees, which is almost, it's almost 65, one time, that's 5,000 dollars there. That plays out. So, it could be net neutral factor if the board confirms this.
Okay, my question then is, when is the approval needed?
Well, so, we'd like to get, since we don't need July, we would like to get our recommendation approved next meeting. So, a letter could go out, the families, so they're aware of the fee for next year. So, I mean, I have any questions about, you know, we had gone back and forth with, you know, so now they're instituted across the board fee for all, all families, whether they use it or not. So, the question was, is that a more handy question than that?
And what happens when they don't pay it?
A good question, that we, that we had discussed about. So, you know, right now, if you, if you don't pay for a book you destroyed or you owe a fee to the district, you don't, that gets you a penalty. Congratulations. So, that fee would roll up into a, to a recognition.
I notice a surprise you, a new voice of objection. The year before you and I were on the board, a board member named Monica Hannel was in charge of the Urban Enhancement Committee. And she worked diligently for a year trying to make the cost of participation in all these subsidization. And the board at that time decided it would be too costly because some of the fees were 700 or 800 dollars per person. But you wanna swing the other way, you wanna, you wanna force people who are not playing football or baseball or sports to subsidize the people that are? And I don't see where that's fair. I mean, the people that aren't participating in football.
I saw you look at.
Can I finish, please?
Sure.
With the hopes of getting a scholarship or whatever. I don't think it's fair to make somebody that doesn't wanna play sports subsidize the people that do.
It's an elegant question, you know, and I struggle with that myself. So, kind of the way I look at it is if you attend, if you attend college, you're charged a student activity fee, whether you attend an activity or not. And it's kind of along that, that model, as it were. And that's, you know, that's why we also tried to keep that, I think, to a manageable number of maximum of that $100. And surely the folks, you know, who are more dependent with that fee would be waiting. Again, very delicate question.
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not sure how I feel about it.
My thinking was that it would then encourage everyone to try something. That's why I. Because they pay it anyway.
If you're, if you have to work, you know, after school, you know, you, you don't really have an opportunity to participate in, you know, the extracurricular stuff. I mean, I don't know, I understand the logic. You're trying to spread it out, try to increase participation in some of the sports. It's just, I don't know that I like the idea of forcing someone who, who doesn't, who may not be able to, to, you know, force them to pay and then hold their diploma over their head for not paying when they really had no benefit that had. I don't know.
I have one comment about this and a question that should be briefed hopefully. Number one, this model that you're following that is similar to the student activity fee, for the record, is no different than the way taxes are levied today. You pay school tax whether you have kids or not. So, I don't think it's, it's not dissimilar to how a lot of things are handled in life already. Whether it's fair or not, I don't think people are unused to the concept. But what I'm trying to understand is it sounds like, Dave, I think you said that the numbers based on the past year were 117,000 that we got from Lauren?
Yes.
And then Carol said something about the new model being like 165?
The math, the math I did was about 122. Because I had to take out the free and reduce.
I'm just going on what I heard and I'm not, I'm not trying to mold you for that.
No, I was saying the net difference in the budget was 65, was about from last year.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where, where our shortfall comes from.
There are additional, additional costs. I mean, I mean, right now that 117 is going into our general fund. So, you know, I mean, we are adding costs back, we're buying, now we're bringing up cost of uniforms, now we're bringing up coaches. So, is it, is it a net loss?
Right, I was just trying to figure out whether these numbers, that 175 you took out of the coaching were, were established to generate enough income to cover the additional costs or not.
It was not, it was just not generated to replace what was currently taken in from the, the cost that we charged this past year.
Is that, was that 117 before or after we took out all the music students? Because we already, when we made that code, correct, that we took, I believe that.
I was old, I was small, I'm a parent of our own, but he said that was everything, which included clubs, which I assumed that was the fee that the band students made the club fee for.
So, it includes the band kids this year. So, what, I think I remember was like 7,000 roughly? So, that, that we were projecting by moving the music, yeah, I know, it was less than 10. So, so we're probably at 110, because it's not 117.
I have a question for Mr. Eris and Neil involving your comparison of this model to property taxes. Mrs. Bright said the, she hopes the activity fee will inspire kids to participate. So, are you saying property taxes inspire people out of kids or?
Why are you attributing comment that Carol made to me? I didn't say that. Carol thought.
Maybe I, maybe I have kids because I'm not like, I'm not.
Well, there is a little bit of an inspiration actually to send my kids to public schools that's paid for by our kids. Yeah, it is a little bit of incentive, instead of paying additional to the private school.
Okay, so we're going to formulate some type of motion for next week, is that?
Yeah, here I'm gonna get the discussion out and get some feedback and then I'll sit and form.
Okay.
Will we have any? So, what you discussed, do we have any public letter or notification right now prior to this possible play to the public to let them know what we could have a change?
Are you, are you suggesting to get a poll? That was a poll we did a lot.
Well, I mean, if you want to get the notification out there to the public, I mean, it'd be fair. It's gonna come to the board, they're gonna vote and then people that are, find out later.
They want to put it on the website or something? That's not a bad idea. They will give it on the activity fee realignment.
Potential prosper activity.
It's not a bad idea.
I think you could have more support.
They don't play in Athens, in fact, they don't participate in the special. I think it's a great idea personally. As I say, the committee members were excited about it, all the representatives from the district.
We didn't get any, we didn't get any public engagement.
Yeah.
You never get the public at the meeting until you're ready, you put something in place, then they come out to support or complain about it. It's the way it is.
Yeah, so it's just a cost and it will come out either for or against and we see what the.
It would be helpful just to have some type of summary of the costs, you know, what the true impact of the budget would be.
Would it be a fun meeting, the budget, the budget vote?
It's all part of it. Any other board comment on the extracurricular committee? Any public comment? Yep, you had it and then you turned it off.
Did I turn it off?
Yeah, you turned it off. When the red light comes on, you're good.
How would you levy that on kids with special needs? How would you levy that fee on kids with special needs?
I think maybe that they should be voiced.
Thank you for bringing that to think about.
Good question. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to facilities. Mr. Dasky?
Thank you. So, facilities met earlier this evening and, oh, sorry. And we do have some recommendations that came forth from the meeting that would have to be added on through the voting meeting. And so, the first one was the architect of Rancor. And the business office did put out RFPs and they had four responses. And the committee looked at them and at this point in time, we're looking to recommend that the board consider Thompson Associates as the architect of Rancor. As you know, they did a study of those schools a few years ago, they do have a little bit of familiarity. And the majority of their rates seems like they were lower. It was really a little bit hard to compare apples to apples because the, all four firms have their rates and then three of the firms also outsourced some of the things, but they might have 25 different positions. So, you're not necessarily gonna get the lowest on every single position, but it seemed like Thompson was, was lower overall on the majority of positions. like Thompson was, was lower overall on the majority of positions. So, we looked at recommending that the board consider Thompson and Associates as the Architect of Record. That would allow the administration to have the structural issue at Birdsboro looked at and analyzed. We'd like to do that in the summer before we have kids back in there next year, so if there are any concerns or issues, that's taken care of. And it wouldn't be doing any repairs or anything like that right now, it would just be them analyzing it, seeing what would need done. They would probably be able to give us an estimate of what it would cost to do the repairs, but if we decided to do the repairs, we'd have to go through the design and bid and all that. It's really just ensure that it's safe at this point in time before we put the kids back in there. So, that was one of the recommendations. The second recommendation is the card access. We're finally there. And I think, we talked about it, the May meeting, the committee did make a recommendation to do the card access, and the total cost was for all the buildings, the investment was 101,800. The reason it was held off last month was we did want to look at considering whether the doors that were alarmed could notify people through either email or text messaging, and if there was an additional cost for that. There is not. That is built into the software now, it's not an extra, so that can be set up to notify, you know, the principal, facilities director, the superintendent, and GCA. However, we wanted to set that up, they could set that up for each building. So, the committee is recommending that we move forward with that. The third thing that we're looking to recommend, and it actually was approved in February, there was a high school, the high school rekeying as part of the safety considerations, making sure that the high schools able to lock down all the areas if they need to in case of a situation that would arise. In February, we authorized $45,000 to rekey the doors. As they've been moving forward with that, they've found some additional doors that need either the doors replaced, or they need some other upgrades, and so there's an additional $12,835 that facilities has, or that Casey has said would need to finalize everything. And that would be adding the two LGI doors, the stair tower, one of the set of stair tower doors where the doors are bent, the doors are going bent, so they're not going to be locked, and an auxiliary gym single door. So, the committee is recommending that we authorize that additional 12,835 hours. It doesn't make sense to do half of it. If we're going to do it, we feel we should do it right, get it done, and then the high school should be done. I did send out to the whole board this evening, about 6:15, 6:30, an email that outlines all the high school rekey doors and what it all entails. So, we do have that for review. I think that was the three recommendations, and then he is also, they're also are going to be looking at purchasing electric. Our contract expires at the end of December. This is a good time of year. They said right now, the prices are low, so Casey's going to try to get some prices for next week, maybe we can lock that in before we go on break in July, but we don't have prices at this point on this. So, if you have any questions?
A quick question, Mr. Tredaski. For months now, I've been reading in the reports that we get that the high school cannot be secured at night, there's activities going on. I was curious exactly what, you know, whether that was discussed, or what potential solution is out. And then there's, there's certainly a couple gates that I never see now. So, we do have.
Well, my understanding is that Casey went through all the doors, and with Preston and Aaron, and they're okay with these doors, the doors that, like.
So, was it where the doors that were concerned, or where the access?
That I can't, I don't know if, maybe Casey's going to address that, I don't know.
There are some pull-down gates in the hallways that are going to be changed and the locks on as well, because nobody has keys except for like one or two people for those, for those pull-down gates.
Right.
As well as that, the stairwell doors, there are a couple that are not able to lock, and one pair is bent. So, with the ability to change the locks in the pull-down gates and then replace the doors, we're going to start locking down all the stair towers as well. So, people would only have access to leave the building through the stair towers, they would not be able to travel through the building in the stair tower. So, if they entered the stair tower on the first floor and went up to the second floor, those doors would be locked. So, you would, and then when you would come back down to the first floor, those doors now are locked behind them, so they would have to go outside to get out of the building. So, it eliminates the ability of the students instead of to be kind of having free rein of the school as they do now. And then once we get the locks replaced on the gates, we'll be then able to start closing the gates properly for events. And then there may be a gate or two we might have to add down the road, but at this point in time, where the gates are, it should work fine for events as, as is.
Okay, thank you very much.
And was it one of the benefits, Casey, that common areas can be locked by any teacher or anything?
Yes, and as part of it is at the high school, if there is a lockdown of the teachers outside of their, their classroom, they will be able to go into any unlocked space, any common space or any unlocked classroom, go into that classroom and lock it from the inside with their classroom key. They would not have to just have that classroom key. So, if they were in room 220 in the second floor of the high school and ended up in the Annexburg meeting, and as they were walking down the hall and there was a lockdown, they could go into an open classroom, close the door behind them, and lock that from the inside to secure that space. Even if there's students with them in the hallway, they would do that as well. So, we've designed a key system accordingly for that purpose.
So, to follow that then, are we going to have a good key withdrawal system then?
We currently do. Aaron and I do not hand out any keys without assigning to our sheets. So, we, and every key will have a serial number on it, so that key is specifically assigned to that staff member.
Okay.
So, we'll avoid.
Problems with that?
Correct.
And, Mr. Flagaville, are these keys are of the generation that they can't be copied?
Correct. Nobody can even purchase keys to match our keys. We have a patented serial number on our key system, and I have to buy it from the manufacturer, and right now, Mr. Harris and I are the only ones able to call them to get blanks.
Blank and working in a blank.
Blank and working in a blank, yes.
So, you will have a motion prepared for the additional 12,800 for the, above what the board already approved in February, and the motion for the Architect of Record?
Can I just forward that to have them put on the agenda or?
Sure, yeah, that's right. You're going to send those.
Okay, I didn't know, okay, I didn't know if I had to make it that night. Okay.
Any other board questions for Mr. Tredaski? Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to finance. Mr. Rathke?
Okay, so, we've actually pretty much, I think, talked about most items already, and they're on the agenda. We did also go over our GCA costs for the year, doesn't seem to be wrong with the billing versus the contract on there. We also discussed attritioning, which the rule is on the agenda as well. We also discussed River Rock, and I think everybody knows that they are not pursuing additional space. However, we are going to have a discussion about changing the, right now we have the student exchange for the leasing as opposed to actually getting a cash or a, we're going to have a discussion with them on that, and also we're going to make sure that they actually, I think it's already placed in that, right, the gym that we're allowing them to use the upstairs. Things would actually use in the space that they're paying for. Officially, Mr. Law had updated us on the Bird's Row Houston Opportunity Zone. Is that correct, Mr. Law? So, that was in regards to the power plant sites, and that runs through 2021, at which time that, I believe, on the spreadsheet that just came out, I did not see the tax number on there for the power plant. Did that come off?
No, we removed that. We had plugged in those miscellaneous numbers projecting out, but I believe those are better removed now, because the five-year plan that we have runs out through 2020, 2021, but the current Koz for the Bird's Row portion expires December of '20, it needs to be applied for annually. That in place, it was a seven-year extension, one of the granted, 1213, and of course, prior owners didn't apply for the Koz, they didn't pay the taxes. So, all the taxes were recovered, but the closing was completed last November, I believe it was, so taxes were caught up to date. And then the new owner immediately applied for Koz exemption for the 2017 tax year effective July 1st year, and it was granted. So, presumably moving forward, there will be a year, and it will be granted Koz exemption. But that was why the number really won't be anything, except for a fraction perhaps on the inside. That's, that's the details behind the current Koz.
So, potentially, you know, that revenue could come online, but not on that current five-year, five-year.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, there's three properties. Talking about the museum, Birdsboro Power, and the St. Mark's Square. Those are the three properties.
The St. Mark's Square was a bit out of the, but learned about, they've done the Koz.
No, I don't, well, those, I mean, as far as the anticipated tax revenue, that's what you're looking at.
Yeah, museum was, that's the, what we're hearing.
We're not sure.
But I think the border market, St. Mark's Square, being alerted, we're about the midpoint on that, and the assessment office said it's going to be another two or three years before we see the full course of alert, a five-year alert, and also the full assessment warrant for, for these two more.
So, is that in the budget at all? No, because there's no assessment.
There's a tough to.
So, that's a income going to hit, talk, talk.
It's very small. I mean, we're not, not even 100,000. Yeah, the 900,000 that we were promised, you know, so now we're down to maybe 100,000 within, yeah.
By the way, the assessment office, they, they suggested we research the similar project up in, along, however you pronounce it, and she said, you're right on, she said the same thing, it probably happened out there with those.
Is there anything else for finance? Any questions for Mr. Rathke? Any public comment on finance? Seeing none, Mr. Kurtz is not here to provide his personnel committee report, so we're going to skip that. We'll move to policy.
That's meeting in London, 19th, and we have a slew of first and second readings, as you see on the agenda. We've been prioritizing them and sort of skipping the order over to hit some of the more prominent topics, which you can see there in the section, that D16D. And we are getting final readings on our special education policies, which is, which was a focus for a handful of previous sessions, so that's really it.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? Seeing none, public comment, policy? Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next is Transportation Committee, Mr. Okasneal.
We did not meet in May, so we will be meeting at noon next Tuesday, that's a long year.
Yeah, can you ask Mrs. McNeely to send out a meeting invitation, or put it on the district calendar, because it's not, I didn't think it was on my schedule, I just looked and it's not.
Okay.
Just reminder. Because that's a reminder for me, and I'll remember. Any questions for Mr. Okasneal on transportation? I guess I have one. How's the new transportation coordinator coming?
He's doing out very well.
He's going to hit the ground running when he's by himself in less than a month's time?
He's actually doing good now. He's doing pretty good now. He's on leave right now. Ron's on vacation for the week, and he's already started working the TransFinder program. We just got that running today, and he's pinning everybody, and he's getting everything straight, so he's, he's taking the initiative. He's actually doing very well, very well. Went through training up in New York, he just got back, he had learned a lot. It was overwhelming, but we just got the program today on the computer. Everything seems to be working, and he's already, I think they call it geo-something, they're actually pinning people, where the student data came, what is it called?
Geo-mapping.
There it is, geo-mapping. So, we were just learning about that today, we were on a training, and he was actually, he's taking the initiative to go through the 192 that were not. So, next week, we go to training every Monday with TransFinder, but he's working out very well.
For Mr. Okasneal, if I could, I know the committee wants to have a discussion, but, you know, we, we had the Serae here, the child one of us, and then we just had the recent incident with a driver getting impaired. Unfortunately, we, we, we were very fortunate, nothing major has occurred. Sort of, is it, do we, I mean, they're separate companies, but I was questioning your policies, whether they're, they're followed, the bus company, whether they have them, if these policies. And I know the policies were put in place and with the, you know, with the student that was also, as opposed to there was a policy in place, but it wasn't followed, I was curious, have you seen the hairdryer hobby, you know, is that they call?
Once again, I mean, clearly, I don't work for either of the companies, so I have to take people at their word, right, which is, yes, the policies exist. They haven't, we have copies of the policies on the handbooks, so we can confirm that they're in there. But I think it's like any business, right, where you train your employees to do a certain number of things, and then your employees are not supervised every second of every day, so if they don't do what they said they will do, then you have some liability there, but you can't control that, right? I don't, I don't think there's any more incidents of employees not following directives with these two contractors than there are with the vast majority of businesses in the area.
I guess the question that came up was, should the, you know, should they have a formal police come to patrol out there before? So, yeah, that was exactly it. I don't know anything about that.
I can answer that. I can answer. The, the bus management company, they have trained people to administer that, and that's what they did. They're testers, so that's what they did on site. I spoke to the family that's sitting here tonight, and updated them on what's happening once I found out. What happened was a driver showed up impaired. What happened was a driver showed up impaired. The Ms. Anxat notified transportation, and they went out, pulled the driver off the route, replaced him. No? They didn't replace, they didn't pull him off?
Driver got hit back today.
Okay, that's what I, I know when I spoke to you, I called you a few times when I was updated. And then they tested him, and what happened was, they, from what I was told, they were going to press charges, but they waited too late. And the local police said that that timeframe had expired to charge that person driving under the influence. I'm sorry?
So if they tested that person?
No.
No, you have to have a law enforcement personnel do that.
Right. But, but when they tested the person, the person blew whatever, or tested whatever, and they were terminated. But the bus company waited too long to notify police, and I think, I was told around 11:00 or 12:00, and then later on that afternoon, they contacted the police. So I don't know when they first found the person, or when they tested, but that timeframe had elapsed, and it was too long.
Was there a explanation for not calling the police soon?
That they were investigating. That's all I know, that they were investigating.
I mean, I know that the legal impairment for a bus driver is different then.
Yeah.
But, I mean, and I know that it's a fair test, but it sounds like he was close to the legal impairment today, as much as regular, so would they send him home, does he get dropped home?
No, I believe they tested him on site, and, or wherever they took him, and he was terminated.
But they let him drive home, is what Mr. Rathke is asking.
I don't know if they let him drive home or not. I know that he was tested when he parked back the van, or whatever. I don't know what they did with him. I don't know how he, I don't know how the gentleman got home.
I have a different question for Mr. Okus and Neil that I probably should have raised months ago, regarding that the student was left on the bus. I would say Robert School District, when the bus driver parks his bus, he has to walk to the back of the bus, either open the door or push a button. Otherwise, an alarm goes off. What this does is forces the bus driver to walk through the bus, to make sure there's no damage to the bus. But more importantly, no kids left on the bus. Are our buses now going to be equipped like that?
Yes, that's in the new contract, all the buses.
Thank you.
And so I don't know if we wait and ask Mr. Sewers about this, but is it worth sending something, writing to both bus companies stating that, you know, we feel that if there's a situation where there's a potential impairment, the police should be called to the scene immediately? I don't, I can't believe that's not their policy. They know, just because they have somebody trained to do the test, I mean, that's not a misfortune. It's almost like they wait until outside the timeframe to even call you. Because if, if the bus was out at 7:30, and you don't get notified until 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock, you're already outside of the timeframe. Well, we did two hours, it might be three. But they've got to know that, if they have somebody trained for that. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we should be putting them on record as stating that's our expectation. Whether it's their policy or not, I think that should be the policy, and I would think that's your expectation. That's a crime.
I guess you really want to see, number one, if they have a policy, and what it says. And obviously, if it says that they have, that this person has been trained, shows up, they tested the individual, and I think it's like point two for a bus driver, or something. Mr. Martino, no.
Point two for a bus driver.
Point zero, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, point zero two. That their policy is to immediately call the police as, right there and then. That should be what their policy is.
If their test doesn't count, why are they bothering?
I just thought a pass was a bit.
Even in the corporate world, I have what's called reasonable suspicion, and I can send somebody for, for testing. Now, if this person has the ability in their license, or they have some authority to be able to use this device for a preliminary test, that should be all you really need, as far as the employer, not only to make that person eligible for removal, but to recommend to law enforcement that you have the reasonable suspicion that this person is impaired in some way. They need, then that's when law enforcement, who has the ability to, to test, and have those test results administered to, to, you know, or filed.
Do you think this guy now will apply to the bus company, or is that on his record?
Yeah, it's on his driving record.
That might be true, but if they call this prior employer, at this, they probably actually have the right to say, this happened.
I'd say it was turned, he's not eligible for rehire. There's a lot of reasons I can read.
It's very restrictive what you're allowed to say.
You know, while we're on this, something apparent, I, you know, the question I have is, do our contractors regularly go test a certain class?
I believe that that's in the policy. Once again, anyone asking you a specific contract, a specific question about the terms of companies employed that I don't work for, you're up to asking questions I'm not, I can't.
They randomly be able to rip off that available. I think drug testing, Mr. Rathke, I believe is mandated by the state.
I believe.
For the CDL, it is, yeah. But I don't expect you to be able to answer that, or know those, but I just think that, I'm just saying, I think, maybe, from my opinion, we should put them on notice of what our expectations are. They're our contractor, you know, we have a contract with them.
Yes, well, at the risk of sounding like an apology to the bus companies, which I'm clearly not, because if I were writing the show, I would likely think that the policy would say, in a situation like this, you call the police immediately. And I'm very sorry to both of you for what happened, and, and how it handled. The flip side is, the contract now is what it is, and we've signed it. Now, that's not to say that, I don't know what the policy is, but at this point, I think the only reasonable thing that we can expect them to abide by is what the current terms of the contract are. I don't know how, at this point, you go about saying, by the way, if this happens again, if it's not in the contract, they don't.
I think that's a performance issue.
But Mr. Sewers, to be here, that's, I think we just bring this to Mr. Sewers, as her recommendation, but I see no reason, I agree with Mr. Radzki, why he put them right to the company and just express our expectations.
Well, I don't think we need to wait till Monday. I mean, you make a call to Brian, you're close to the situation, you understand it, and that we can be prepared for, for Monday with some answers, since then we won't meet again until August, so.
So I don't, what I don't understand is, what were they investigating? If they gave, if the guy blew a point oh eight, what more is there to investigate?
I don't know.
Is there any other board comment? Public comment?
Lawrence had 17 hundred dollars. I'm gonna check it through this without being upset. What happened is totally unacceptable on anyone's. They didn't call at 11:00 o'clock, they called at 1:30, and they have to reach the police. Chris Purgis picked up at 27:00, and it takes about 30, 40 minutes to get to school. So they waited all but seven hours to make that phone call to the police. If they knew at 1:25 to call the police, why didn't they call them at quarter of seven, when I made the phone call to them, telling them that, as soon as I closed, as soon as I opened the door, I smelled something, and I still fault myself for not knowing right then and what it was. It wasn't until I closed the door that he drove up, he was like, oh my gosh, I smell like alcohol. I called the company, and I tell them I need my son back. Here's the reason why. Do you know he comes back on that same bus, by the same bus driver? And then I get a call from Daniel Boone telling me, yesterday, Mrs. Anxat, your suspicions were correct. He was under the influence. And it's not just under the influence, it's point oh nine, that's four times plus what the legal limit is to drive any child in this district. Any child, not just my son. Who is special needs, who has Down syndrome, who did not tell me, mommy? He was sorbing today, he almost hit us. It's the end of the year, how many times did he do it, and I didn't know? That's the scary part, let alone the fact that they did the wrong thing, and they chose to do the wrong thing. And as I stand for today, until the day I'm back, they chose to do the wrong thing to cover themselves. And we, the standard rule in this community, are still going to use that company, which chooses their company over the safety of our children? That is inconceivable to any parent. For their child, it is not a privilege to make it to and from school every day. It is the right of every child to make it to and from school safely. And for them to not even know that their driver was impaired is unacceptable, to say the least. And going forward, do we know I have not received the phone call from Daniel Boone stating, going forward, Mrs. Anxat, here's how we're gonna handle this. Here's the changes we've made. I want you to feel better about putting your son on this bus, because you trust us with your child. And I have yet to receive that phone call. So I have taken my son to and from Wilson every day, and until this board and someone from Daniel Boone can step up and say, going forward, this is the new implementation that we had for the safety of your son and every other child in this district, I will continue to take them. Because this is unacceptable. And I do have a copy of the police report for anybody who would like to read it. It is public knowledge. It is not a secret. It shouldn't be a secret. Nobody, nobody has approached my husband for myself. And that is unforgivable. Because you expected me the next day to put my son on the bus. There's no way on this God's great earth that I would do that, or any other parent in this district would do that. He may not mean a lot to somebody else, but he sure as hell means a lot to me, and his sisters, and his dad, and his grandparents. So for that, that is unacceptable. So does anybody have any suggestions going forward? And for nobody to have been in contact with this company, to tell them, this is what we expect, I think that's common sense to make the phone call the very next day, if not the same day.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, there's no one on this board that finds this acceptable. You know, we, you heard our discussion tonight. We are committed to making sure that every child has safe transportation to and from, from their home. And I thank you for being your child's advocate. I mean, you did the, I know you, this, no one's trained to know how to react right away when a situation, situation like this, but you second guessed yourself, you did the right thing, and, and, you know, we, luckily, luckily, I'm saying, everything turned out okay. Your son was returned to you, you know, but, you know, I promise from, from the school board side, we will hold our contractors accountable, and if they have a policy on this, and how it should be handled, we expect them to do that. We, there's no, there's no compromise on something for child safety.
And going back to that, they, he proceeded to tell me that day, Mr. Coquely, how their business has, have they been in business for 65 years? And mind you, at this point, I compare that's how long they've been in business. They had no procedure in place. That is bull. Every power, every company has got to have a policy for reasonable suspicion, as you stated. And they told me that they took him somewhere, and he registered a point oh nine, minus four plus what he should have been to drive any child.
Let us, let us do our part, as best we can, to get to the bottom of it, if there's changes that need to be made. I mean, both, both of the contractors are very well, we have a good relationship with them. I'm sure they'll be very open to make any modifications to their policy, if they have them, which I'm sure, I would hope they do. And we can certainly make you a part of that, those conversations, when we come to the final solution of what that is, to reach out to you and tell you what the solution is going to be.
I mean, this is for his eighteen, we have three more years of this whole district to get him to and from school safely. So anything less than not being point zero zero is unacceptable.
I agree.
And not getting a phone call from Daniel Boone is unacceptable, to say the least. Going forward, here's how we're-
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to old business. Just the minutes. There's no new business?
To put the, after the finance committee meeting last week, I was approached by several members of the public, saying they couldn't hear what we're saying. In fact, I watched Marie move her chair about 10 feet closer, so she could hear what we were saying. Why don't we use microphones in committee meetings? I mean, we encourage the public to come. We had it, we had it fixed, so they could hear what we're saying.
I agree.
At least in, I mean, at least for the meetings in here, when the public is the bigger groupies.
Right. If you're meeting in this room, there's, you know, when we're over here at the library, we're sitting around a small, small desk. It's not an issue, it's not a problem to be heard. But when you're in this room, I, I agree, I think we should be using the sound system, because the recordings are so much better to try and listen, if you're trying to follow, or file through on, you know.
And a question for Mr. Matt. Could you work out what it would cost to fix these microphones, so that we're not playing this push-button game every time, and so that more than four people could talk at once? Please?
Is there any presentations by the public on any issue? Seeing none, motion to adjourn, and then we'll move into the special. Motion by Mr. Rathke, second by Mr. Scott.